come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Herndon High School Guitar Four Ensemble under the direction of Christopher Cunningham. Thank you so much to the Herndon High School Guitar Ensemble and Mr. Cunningham. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712-D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 6, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. I have a motion by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Darinak Kofax. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Hines away from the Board table. And I would like to let people know that Ms. Hines had to leave early this evening. She was not feeling well. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board and on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board under the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. This week, Fairfax County Public Schools lost a beloved former superintendent in Jack Burkholder. I call on Ms. Strauss for recognition of his service to our school system.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Former FCPS Superintendent William Jackson Burkholder died a few days ago. We want to take a moment to recognize Jack Burkholder's contributions to our great school system. Born in Bedford County, Virginia, Jack began his educational career as a school bus driver. He later left a job as principal in Bedford County to accept a teaching position at Bushhill Elementary School in 1956. Even though there were only 30,000 students in the FCPS system at the time, Jack could see the growth in our community beginning to happen, and he wanted to be a part of that moment. Borrowing $700 from his in-laws, Jack purchased a $15,000 home in the Braddock District, eventually moving his family to the Ravensworth Farm Community where they stayed until 1985. Following his one year at Bushhill, Jack taught for a year at Rose Hill Elementary before being named Assistant Principal at Mount Vernon High School. He then moved to the Central Office where he served in a number of positions, including Deputy Superintendent and Superintendent from 1982 until his retirement in 1985. His appointment as Superintendent followed a tumultuous period between the School Board and the Superintendent's office. Board members at the time described him as "one who can bring us calmly through troubled waters," and the tone he sets will improve the atmosphere in which the system operates. The president of the FEA said Jack has "a way of taking the humanistic approach in addressing issues and concerns of teachers." In a 2005 interview, Jack is quoted as saying, "The schools belong to the parents and citizens." Jack followed that philosophy during his time as Superintendent and through his years of service to FCPS. In the same interview, Jack was asked to describe the most enjoyable part of his job as Superintendent. His response: "Visiting the schools, interacting with teachers, working with the advisory councils, and I even enjoyed working with the school boards. They were dedicated people, and I just had great respect for them." When he retired, he was universally regarded as someone you can disagree with and still come away smiling. The Burkholder Administrative Center, which served as the school division's headquarters until 2006, was of course named for Jack. It was called the Burkholder Center. He served his country as a Marine during World War II and had a distinguished 29-year career with FCPS. Thank you, Jack, for your service to Fairfax County Public Schools. Please keep the Burkholder family in your thoughts and prayers. Mr. Burkholder was the first superintendent that I knew when I first became active in FCPS as a very young PTA president. He was kind. He was very understanding of schools and teachers, and he did help to keep the waters calm at a time when the School Board and the school system needed him. So we owe him a deep note of gratitude, and we do wish well and extend our sympathy to the Burkholder family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, for those very kind words. I now call on Mr. Tigner for an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Human Rights Day is December 10, 2018. Human Rights Day is observed every year on December 10, the day that United Nations General Assembly adopted in 1948 the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. This year, Human Rights Day marks the 70th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a milestone document that proclaimed the inalienable rights which everyone is inherently entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political, or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. It is the most translated document in the world, available in more than 500 languages. Drafted by the representatives of diverse legal and cultural backgrounds from all religions of the world, the Declaration sets out universal values and a common standard of achievement for all peoples and all nations. It establishes the equal dignity and worth of every person. Thanks to the Declaration and the state's commitments to its principles, the dignity of millions has been uplifted and the foundation for a more just world has been laid. While its promise is yet to be fully realized, the very fact that it has stood the test of time is testament to the enduring universality of its perennial values of equality, justice, and human dignity. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all. The principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948. We need to stand up for our own rights and those of others. We can take action in our own daily lives to uphold the rights that protect us all and thereby promote the kinship of all human beings. Thank you.
Now we come to the citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come tonight. And actually, we do not have any speakers signed up for tonight, but we do have a video from a constituent who was unable to attend. So if we can go ahead and show the video, unless I see someone shaking their hands, are you... Okay. Okay. So can we go ahead and show the video?
Hi. My name is Rochanna Hyzer. I'm sorry I can't be there tonight. I'm actually at the Welcoming Inclusion Network meeting. My testimony today is in honor of Inclusive Schools Week. As you know, my advocacy has been on strengths-based inclusion for people with disabilities. I am here today to ask that FCPS equity initiatives and participation in the One Fairfax Initiative include systematic, academic, and social inclusion initiatives for children with disabilities. I want Fairfax County to ensure that our calls for equity, justice, and access mindfully include children with disabilities. We cannot have equity without full inclusion of our students with disabilities. We cannot have equity for all of our students if we don't improve outcomes for our students with disabilities and access to all programs, not just academic programs, so they can experience the full range of enrichment offered to everyone else, whether that's through adaptive classes or inclusive classes with support, so they have equal access to find their areas of passions, talents, and strengths. We cannot have equity if we continue to predicate inclusion of students with disabilities based on their academic ability without giving them and understanding the need to give them opportunities to develop other areas of ability and the importance of being included socially with everyone else. We cannot have equity without giving students with disabilities supported chances to be part of inclusive school teams with coaches who are knowledgeable about how to include them, inclusive arts programs, and in numerous other ways, students have found community within their schools. We need to find a way for our students with disabilities to be able to participate in those community-building activities so they too belong in their schools. Numerous studies show the benefits of inclusive education for those with and without disabilities, both on achievement, on outcome, but also on long-term success of our students with disabilities. Right now, there is an 80% unemployment rate for people with autism. There are dangerous police encounters and criminal justice encounters for people with disabilities, especially those with behavioral disabilities. Public businesses, including to my son, punish and reject people with autism, not because of severe behavior issues, but due to the lack of understanding of the lived norms and behavior of autism. That lack of understanding can only change if students with and without disabilities learn to accept and work with each other and see each other as part of the norm, and that comes through social inclusion, inclusive activities, clubs, and anything else that isn't academic for those students who can't manage academics. Segregation in school leads to segregation in life. If we end segregation in schools, we end segregation in life and improve outcomes for 1 in 59 students with autism.
I now call on Mr. Tigner for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure most people are familiar with the tale of the hair and the tortoise. It's a great little story, right when I was young. And this is...I bring it up because there's a hard-working tortoise and the evolutionarily fit and fast hare. And this reminds me because when I've been looking at some of the policies that we pass and some of the methods we take to better our students for future, sometimes we take shortcuts. And in day-to-day life, we always are seeking shortcuts. You know, it's...we copy and paste something instead of re-typing it out. If we're walking down a hallway, we'll cut the corner instead of walking around. And it's just a common thing, and we seek them out in day-to-day life. In FCPS, sometimes this causes us to overlook the long-term impacts of what taking a shortcut may do. You know, lessons are learned when you take that longer route, lessons of determination, a resiliency, small things that are measurable that might have a large impact on future life. And this brings you back to that fairy tale or that little tale of the tortoise and the hare. You know, the hare was an easy winner. You know, they took that shortcut, they're evolutionary fit, they're much quicker. But through hard work and determination, the tortoise didn't take any shortcuts, and in the end, it won. So I think that's a really important thing. I say this to remind my fellow Board members of what occurs when we only observe instant results and not the long-term impacts of some of the decisions we make, because although we might see an improvement in, for example, attendance or grades across the board for students, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what follows them through the rest of their life. And that's very important to take care of and take notice of, because portrait a graduate, we're hopefully preparing them for the real world and what's beyond as well. For basic matters, what I've been doing for the past little bit, I had a really great meeting, actually today, with Fairfax High School, Our Minds Matter. Our Minds Matter is a group of students sort of across a couple of different high schools, and they try to embody the mental health issues that students take and address the concerns of it and help each other out. We had a really cool exercise today where they took out sticky notes and wrote on sticky notes, "One nice thing that someone's done for you and one nice thing you've done for someone in the past month." And there's a couple of cool things that came up. There's a student who had bought coffee for the person behind them in line at a store and something like perhaps grand as that, or just someone who held a door for someone else on the way in. And I think those small changes and, you know, even just someone else helping you out, it goes a long way, especially in someone who might be having a tough day. So make sure to always be kind and help others out. It really is appreciated. Last week, I had a tour with the non-traditional campuses in FCPS, and that was an amazing tour, and most people don't know about it. I've got a little quick summary that they sent to me to read about it. So non-traditional campuses and schools, they're housed within our schools, perhaps an off-site campus or a campus as well for adults. And these are for students who may benefit from flexible school day, allowing them to work or care for their own children, students who require smaller learning environments for academic and behavioral success, students who are transitioning back to a school setting from homebound services, and students who have been experiencing school anxiety, older language learners, older people returning to get their high school education, and students assigned by the FCPS hearings office or by an IEP team following a hearing. And these school programs really provide an alternative environment, not similar to like traditional schooling, that sometimes provides the education and the focus and the environment that a lot of people need to be able to pursue their high school education. It was really interesting to talk to them and get some new perspectives on what high school is like for different students. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I know it's not customary that we usually ask a question of our student after they speak, but I really appreciated your reference to the fable, the tortoise and the hare. And I was hoping, in your ever-so-diplomatic remarks, if there were things that you might want to share, like examples where the division has behaved more like the hare instead of the tortoise, so that we, as the Board members, might have a more mindful focus on things we could be becoming more like the tortoise.
Thank you. Yes, I have a few things, and I guess, take everything with a grain of salt. You guys know much more than I do about all this kind of stuff, and there might be tons of circumstances that go past that. An example of that might be, for example, all the classes that our students are taking that are actually rigorous, AP, IB, all this kind of stuff. They're running, they're running fast like that hare was, but they could be burned out. And they see it a lot in our rates of signs of depression, anxiety, and all that kind of stuff within our student body. Another specific example, and I've talked to some students about that, this and gotten a bunch of feedback, is actually a kind of funny one, which is FCPS Wi-Fi. And it's interesting because the regulations on it have been stepped up in year to year. And for this year, for example, you can't go on Netflix, you can't go on Snapchat or Instagram or a couple of other things. And this is sort of the hare aspect, it's got immediate benefits because these students can't be distracted in their classes. But what they're missing are the benefits of learning, to be able to restrain themselves and learn the lesson of focusing, because when they get to college, there's no limit on their Wi-Fi, right? And if they're in that long lecture, that's three hours long, that first-year calculus class or something, they need to also understand that sometimes it's best to put that phone away. So we've been talking about a school, a student at Edison High School suggested that there's a curve of allowing more and more leniency as you get towards your 12th grade years of high school, so that you understand, at least in a non-professional and non-like adult-life environment, that sometimes it's best to stay focused even if you're not 100% engaged. Other students have also said that sometimes they just need a break, and they have no other access route to get that. And sometimes they just need to withdraw themselves or during a free planning period or something like that, take a little bit of time to wind down. And that's really important for a lot of people as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction.
Yes, we're going to do our mid-year budget update. I'd like the Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Lee Burden, to approach. And we're going to catch you up to date with all things budget and then be glad to take any questions. I would like to remind the Board, by the way, while we're doing a presentation today, we will have time at the work session on Monday for detailed questions and deeper reflection from the Board. But we did want to give you and the public a snapshot tonight of our mid-year budget review.
Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders, members of the School Board, and Dr. Braybrand. The mid-year review offers an opportunity to revise the fiscal '19 budget based on current year trends and/or new requirements that have become known or requested since the year-end budget review that was on July 14. The agenda item is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by updated fund statements. And as Dr. Braybrand said, we have a work session on Monday, December 10, and mid-year is one of the topics that we'll be going over there. The data in this report is as of October 31, 2018. On page one, for the School Operating Fund revenue, there are three primary changes. There's a sales tax increase of 2.2 million plus expenditure reductions of about $400,000. The sales tax increase is due to a fiscal '18 late adjustment by the state. State aid, we're predicting, will decrease by 2.6 million, and that's based on an enrollment contraction. And I'll go over the... And I'll go over the enrollment in detail when I get to page four. The other primary changes to the school operating fund are increases in the IDEA grant award of about 1.3 million and the Carl Perkins Grant totaling about $200,000 for a grand total of 1.5. And each of these adjustments include a corresponding expenditure change. Displayed on page two is the school operating fund expenditure changes, which again mirror the revenue changes. Revenue is going up a net of 1.5 million, and expenditures are going up 1.5 million, leaving no additional funds available for allocation to the fiscal '20 beginning balance. Again, the expenditure changes are primarily the recognition of new IDEA grant funds, plus Carl Perkins, offset by some other small fluctuations. Funding is also needed for employee service awards at $15,000 and an additional transfer to ACE. You know, ACE ended fiscal '18 with a small shortfall of about $41,000, if you recall. But after that, we found out that there was a state miscalculation, which resulted in an increase to the school operating fund, but a decrease to the ACE fund, so we need to transfer an additional $46,000. But these two items combined are still far less than the transfers that we've seen historically, although the changes we made in fiscal '18 are believed to not be sustainable in the long term. And so we've built a standard transfer into the fiscal '20 budget that we've already talked about. So, revenues going up 1.5 million, expenditure 1.5, for a net change of zero. The school operating summary on page three shows what I just reviewed in detail. Also on page three is a summary of the beginning balance. We ended up with $24.5 million from the fiscal '18 budget to fund the beginning balance of the fiscal '20 budget. No funds are identified at mid-year, so for now, the beginning balance remains the same at 24.5, and you know that $24.5 million is less than 1% of our total budget. On page four is the enrollment update, which compares the projected enrollment that the budget was based on to the September 30 actual enrollment. Official enrollment for general education was 2,119 students less than the approved projection, a difference of about 1.2%. And this explains, of course, why state revenue is projected to go down 2.6 million. And potentially, the reduction in state revenue could increase at third quarter, but, you know, we're being conservative this early, and this is our best estimate right now. But we'll know more when the governor introduces his budget along with fiscal '20. There's also an update to fiscal '19. Again, to be clear, this is the projected enrollment compared to the September 30 actual. Official special ed, non-traditional programs, and FSEP enrollment counts are not taken until December or later, and that's noted on the chart. Updates to those categories will be provided at the third-quarter budget review. And it should be noted that even though we came in under projection across all levels, that does not necessarily mean any cost savings, especially at 1.2% as such a small amount. The level of staffing needed is more about the distribution of students at each location. As you all know, kids do not come to the schoolhouse door in packages of 25. And so as a result, you can have a slightly less overall in your enrollment, and it doesn't have a major impact on your costs. The contraction in enrollment can probably best be seen by the staffing reserve balance of 108.25 positions, because recall that last year at this time, we had zero staffing reserve. So that really more highlights that contraction that we're seeing. On page five are the changes to other funds. The first one is the school construction fund, and the change there is due to expenditure adjustments for projects after the year-end that resulted in a net decrease in expenditures or increase to the beginning balance of about $77,000. Additionally, some bonds were authorized at 1.3 million for renovation planning at Oakton Elementary. That's just a timing thing, because the bonds were authorized after year-end. Food and nutrition services, again, the changes are due to the adjustments after year-end. They've increased their reserve by $200,000, and those additional revenues are a result of an increase in food sales and USDA summer reimbursements. So again, these are things that happened after the year-end. Adult and Community Ed, or ACE, I already talked about this at length with the transfer for the school operating fund. That total fund is 10 million, and the beginning balance is decreased by 46,000 due to the adjustments. Also, there's a net budget increase in the ACE program of $400,000 due to an increase in the Adult Ed and Family Literacy Grant. The Grants and Self-Supporting Programs appear next. And there's a slight change to the fiscal '19 beginning balance due to adjustments reported after year-end, plus a $4.2 million increase due to new awards or adjustments to current-year awards. And the details about the grant fund adjustments can be found on page six. Page seven includes the School Insurance Fund, which basically just covers workers' comp and risk management. And the latest projections show that claims are decreasing, so about 2.7 million has been allocated to the reserve funds. And the total budget doesn't actually change, the claims go down, and then any surplus funds go into the reserve. The Health and Flexible Benefits Fund has an increase of 1.5 million to the fiscal '19 beginning balance, again, due to adjustments reported after year-end. We've also updated our estimates for revenue and are projecting a decrease of 5.1 million due to decreases in contributions of about 11.6 million, offset by pharmacy rebates of 1.4 million, flex fund revenue increases of 2.8, and interest income of about $700,000. So the 5.1 million is a combination of those items. Expenditures have also been recalculated based on more current trends and reflect a net decrease of 23 million due to lower-than-projected claims, a decrease in our IBNR incurred but not reported, offset by flex fund increases. And so these funds resulted in an allocation to our premium stabilization reserve of 17.9 million. And, you know, just for the record, the premium stabilization reserve stands at about slightly over 20%, and best practices, and what most consultants will tell you, that an adequate premium stabilization reserve ranges from 16% to 20%. You know, because healthcare is a very volatile thing that fluctuates wildly on occasion. So we want to make sure that we always have enough funds in that premium stabilization reserve. Also on page seven is the ERFC Fund. The beginning balance reflects a decrease of 21 million to the fiscal '19 beginning balance due to adjustments reported after year-end. And even though this seems large, it's primarily due to timing, since the final portfolio values are not available until after year-end. They usually come in late July. The other adjustments net to 2 million, so that the fund's ending balance shows a decrease of 23 million. On page eight is the OPEB Trust Fund. That reflects an increase of about $73,000, again, due to year-end adjustments that happened after the year-end review. And because this adjustment captures the June 2018 investment results, which increased their net investment income. The fund statements begin on page nine, and they reflect the changes that I've just shared with you from the narrative section of the mid-year report. I want to remind you again that we have a work session on Monday to talk about mid-year and some other financial matters, and we can answer any questions you have then.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Burden. And as you mentioned, we are going to have a fuller conversation about this on Monday. Before we go, let's not delay till Monday, though, because I have a couple of questions that people want to ask. So I first go to Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not expect any response this evening, but for the Monday's discussion, if anybody could address the variance in enrollment projection versus actual enrollment of 1.2% exceeding 2,000, I would appreciate that, where the discrepancies might have resulted from, in terms of reasons behind, whether improving economy has to do with anything with that. You know, could be a one explanation, partial explanation, or basically where the more discrepancies, geographically speaking, are coming from, if you can identify them for Monday.
Do you want me to answer now, or do you want me to wait till Monday?
I'll wait until Monday, because I may probably have a follow-up questions. I don't want to take up too much time tonight.
Well, and on Monday, I'm just going to do kind of a high-level review of that, because I believe that Mr. Plattenberg will go into great detail about that when they do the CIP in enrollment a little bit later in the month.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Mr. Plattenberg agreed with you, that he would be doing so. So I now call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to very briefly speak to the enrollment projections. And last year, we had already used up our teacher reserve by this time, and at the moment, it stands that we still have positions left. And it's my understanding that across the region, I believe, enrollment seemed to be down at this point, we're not the only one. But if you could explain, since the public is watching tonight, again, confirm that this staffing reserve, these are not teachers who have already been hired. It is money set aside in case we need it during the year. But if you could just answer the simple question, if we don't use all the positions, when is it returned to the budget and what happens with that money that then remains unspent?
The money that remains unspent would just be unused and carry forward to fund the staffing reserve in the next fiscal year. There are vacant positions that just won't be filled. But again, you know, there are groups that, you know, we wait until a little bit later in the year to know what the exact staffing needs are, because assessments are still occurring. And so there still may very well be some of the staffing reserve that'll be utilized over the next few months. But if there is any that remains at the end of the year, it's carried forward to support the staffing reserve in the next fiscal year.
Exactly. What isn't used is rolled forward into the next year. This isn't a use-it-or-lose-it kind of a slush fund that is then used for other purposes. So, thank you very much.
So now I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Evans.
So, Ms. Burden, thank you. I'm going to follow along with Mr. Moon's approach, that just going to sort of introduce where some of my interests might be for Monday. And it does also follow on the lines of our enrollment projections. I appreciate that you were saying, you know, 1.2% is still pretty close to, you know, how best we can in this division of 100 and almost 90,000 students. But what I do find interesting is that, on the one hand, it's very plausible that it's not going to produce a lot of cost savings for a variety of reasons. But interestingly, when we face this year in, year out, and we create our budgets, we also have said to the public, oh, well, we're going to add 2,000 students, and it's going to cost X millions of dollars. And so I kind of want to make sure that we have some clarity as a board and as a division about consistency. So if it's not going to be cost savings when we end up with 2,000 less, one could also argue, why is it cost-producing if we thought we were going to have 2,000 more? So I'm not at all putting you on the spot to answer tonight. I'm just saying that I think it would help us as board members and also help the public to understand, when we build in our budget every year and we project the number of students we think we might get, I know it builds millions of dollars of pressure on our budget, and, you know, now we're kind of in the flip side of it. So I look forward to having a deeper discussion about that.
Well, and to be clear, I did say that it doesn't necessarily mean that there are no cost savings, because as you said, we can have a small increase in the enrollment based on the projections, and of course, that generally adds funds to the budget. But I can tell you that the current September 30 actual is then factored in to the projections for the next year. And I think Mr. Plattenberg will be unveiling those projections. Actually, I think I'm going over those projections on Monday, too. But he'll be going a deeper dive into it. And, you know, based on my knowledge of the superintendent's proposed budget and where we are with that right now, it is indeed, this reduction is resulting in less kids projected for fiscal '20 and is resulting in savings from our original fiscal forecast projection as to the cost of enrollment.
Great. And even if, when we do meet on Monday, if we can get the line-item information, when we built our budget that we're in now, the fiscal '19, we had put in there as part of our request to the board supervisors, what we projected we were going to have for this year's enrollment and how much more in funding we were going to need. And so I know you captured a piece of it with our staffing enrollment that hasn't been expended yet, so that might be where some of the dollars are. But I'd like to understand the delta. And again, it's just more for, I think, more expansive conversation with the board and the public of understanding when we have these fluctuations and what that does to our budgeting. And I just want to compliment you again that I so appreciate the work you've been doing today on our FY '20 budget preparation, the fact that you have brought such a fresh approach to helping us recognize what funding we have been getting from the county and bringing that as part of building the budget so that it creates less anxiety within our community and even within the division of seeing that, based on what the county has been giving us, what they project to be giving to us, than what the delta looks like. And so for the first time in a very long time, you've enabled us to have a budget presentation where we're not looking at $100 million scary number for the delta, but instead closer to, you know, 20 million or so, which, again, for the public, might sound like a lot. But as you and I both talked about, this is a portion we can work with and figure out how to still have strong-funded schools. So I just want to compliment you for your leadership.
Well, thank you, but it's not really me. It's all about Dr. Braybrand's collaboration with the county executive, and that's what makes all the difference in the world.
Well, kudos to Dr. Braybrand and certainly our county executive, Brian Hill, as well. But I do know you are the CFO, and so I appreciate the work you're bringing to it as well and your dialogue. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. If we can have Ms. Evans.
Thank you. Excuse my voice, I think I'm losing it. But I just wanted to say, I wanted to follow up a little bit on the grant section. I don't expect the answers tonight, but I'm seeing the comparison between fiscal year '18 and '19, and of course, we're only partially through the fiscal year '19 year or so. I think it would be useful for us to have a sense either of a projection of where we're going to be or a comparison with where we were last year. Is that possible to take a look at that?
Yes. I mean, just an analysis of fiscal '18 grants compared to where we are in fiscal '19?
Right, where we are. I'd like sort of an apples-to-apples comparison of that.
Yes, we can do that.
Thanks very much.
Colleagues, if you could turn off your lights if you're not... Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yes. So I remind everybody again that the fiscal '19 mid-year budget review will be discussed at the December 10 all-day work session, and action is scheduled for December 20. Item 5.01, this is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and this time will make a motion to confirm a recommended action. I call on Ms. Strauss.
Great, thank you. I'm waiting for Ms. Schulz to come to the table. Okay. I move that the school board authorize the Office of Division Counsel and Associated Litigation Counsel to negotiate a settlement in the case of Hoffman versus the school board according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session. Second.
All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. I would like to remind everybody that even though we may have individual board members away from the table, they are watching on a closed- away from the table, they are watching on a closed-circuit television in the back. And so don't think that they are not participating in the meeting. They've just stepped away for a moment. I now go to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, award a contract for the Clearview Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Crowley, Inc., in the amount of $20,150,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.02, award a contract for the Poe Middle School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Colbert Roofing, Inc., in the amount of $304,972 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.03, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Annandale High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Service Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $710,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.04, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Twain Middle School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Service Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $335,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.05, authorize staff to issue a notice of award to multiple contractors for relocation services for portable classroom trailers and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 6.06, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item seven, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. 7.01, approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the fiscal year 2019 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Saratoga Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, award a contract for the Bush Hill Elementary School modular relocation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.04, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Parklawn Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.05, award a contract for the Franklin Sherman Elementary School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item eight, superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I want to share a couple of things with the board and the public tonight. Last week, the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools and FCPS recognized three local organizations for their work as partners with our schools at our annual State of Education Luncheon. The named business partner of the year was Apple Federal Credit Union and the Apple Federal Credit Union Foundation, which has supported Fairfax for over 10 years. Our workforce development partner of the year was the United States Geological Survey. They work with Chantilly and Southlake High Schools. And our secondary transition to employment program for students with disabilities. And our community partner of the year was Girls on the Run of Northern Virginia. And they offer programming at more than 60 of our schools last year with a goal of developing leadership skills and confidence in girls through the sport of running. The awards recognized the valuable contributions being made by the business and community partners throughout FCPS and increased the importance of business and civic involvement in the school system. We had over 300 business and community leaders attend this year's luncheon, which was an increase over last year. And we doubled the amount raised in this luncheon from 26,000 last year to over $50,000. Those dollars are going to be going to the foundation's teacher grant program that allow our teachers to directly apply for and receive dollars to support portrait of a graduate outcomes in classrooms. So we're so really excited for their work. They continue to do amazing, amazing work. And overall, they raised over a million last year to support programs and initiatives around employee recognition, teacher innovation grants, and kids in need. Finally, I just want to say, I really appreciate the board's recognition of Jack Burkholder. I did share earlier this week with employees in the school system his passing. And I got to know Jack as a mentor and a friend. He was a great man, a great Virginian, a great leader. And I think all of us in Fairfax County Public Schools have benefited from his years of service, 29 years of service upon his retirement in 1985. And, you know, I will continue to use his words to guide me and work to make this school system today the very best that it can be. And my thoughts and prayers are with the Burkholder family.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. And now, next on the agenda is board matters, and I call on Mr. Wilson. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, folks. Next on the agenda is board committee reports, and I call on Ms. Evans for an update from the Governance Committee and the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Governance Committee continues to work on the revisions to the Strategic Governance Manual. We are working diligently on that and hope to have a draft to you in a reasonable timeframe. We also started having a discussion about Ms. McLaughlin's forum topic about bringing issues to the board in a different way, possibly along the lines of what the Board of Supervisors does. We are going to continue that conversation at our next governance meeting. The Schools Committee of the Planning Commission, Ms. Palczek and I have been working with them this year, which is a continuation of work that we have been doing for several years now. We are now at the point where we're getting ready to develop a report about our conversations on a wide range of issues where we have joint interest between the Planning Commission and the school system. These includes economic development, one Fairfax, and equity and access, long-term student forecasting, CIP recommendations, and whether we might want to better integrate what the county does and what we do, co-location of facilities, use of vacant county and school-owned properties, and school proffers are among that. We are starting to develop an outline and a draft, and we hope to bring a draft to the board in a couple of months with the idea that in the spring, we will have a final report.
Thank you. And Ms. Palczek, for an update on the Public Engagement Committee?
Yes, the Public Engagement Committee met this week for a brief session where we discussed the calendar, a couple of issues with next year's calendar. One of them that we will be bringing, I will discuss with the chair how to bring it to the board. One is to get from staff a parent and community-friendly version of next year's calendar that simply has a list of the dates that students are out of school or have half-days, explains it why, so that the community does not have to decipher all of our professional development and teacher workdays. So I know staff is looking at it. I was able to see an initial draft today, and we will have that to share back with PEC shortly. In addition, we did discuss the issue of next year in the 2019-2020 school year. We currently have us open for a full day of school on the presidential primary day of March 3rd, which, if we remember from the last presidential primary, we ended up closing last minute due to our concerns of security for students. So we have a couple of options we discussed that we will bring back to the board for decision and recommendations, and I will schedule that with the chair. And then finally, just wanted to let our board members and the public know that our January meeting has been changed to Monday, January 14th at 10:00 a.m. before our work session, as the scheduled meeting was for a hold-work session. We were not sure if that will be held. So Monday, January 14th at 10:00 a.m. will be our next Public Engagement Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palczek. And I look forward to talking to you about your needs for the PEC committee on our regular schedule. And Ms. McLaughlin, for a report on the SKEPT committee?
Yes, thank you. We had a presentation on, I guess it was just yesterday, and with, before the full SKEPT committee. And it had to do with our School Resource Officer program, getting a chance for the SKEPT committee to review the changes that were made to the county and the school's memorandum of understanding. And it was really a great discussion because we also had three of Fairfax County Public Schools' high school principals join us from Twain Middle School, as well as Centerville High School and McLean High School. And it was really encouraging because a lot of the discussion talked about why having SROs in schools matter. And it's not simply about safety, which of course is always a paramount commitment, but really talking about allowing these positive relationships to develop between students and police officers, that our police officers are sworn to protect and to serve. So it's not about just safety, it's about service and serving our communities. And we know from the research that community policing is highly effective for reducing crime and creating positive connections between police officers and the public. And so that was just a great presentation and discussion. And Dr. Brabran, I want to, again, compliment you and your staff. I think they've just done an excellent job of collaborating with the county. And also to our police chief, Ed Rossler, and our former police chief, who's now the deputy county executive, I always just call him still Chief Roar, but Dave Roar also spoke eloquently about the value of it all. So it was one of the better group dynamics that I've seen. And SKEPT now is up to almost 40 members. It's a really robust collection of voices, and so I felt very good about it. And there was also some tough questions that were being brought up and asked and for further discussion about concerns related to ICE and how that can create concerns for students and families. And I really appreciated, again, the collaborative dialogue that was happening in that meeting with concerned citizens and with our public safety officials. So it was a great meeting. And then the second portion had to do with early childhood funding and program models around the country. And so one of the organizations, it's the Children's Funding Project, it's a national organization, and they presented to us on where localities throughout the country, everywhere from Colorado to Texas to Michigan, Washington State, Tennessee, California, Florida, Philadelphia, Ohio, all places where they have dedicated funding streams specifically to help with services to children beyond just your public schools. So really dedicated especially to things like early childhood education. So that was, I think, helpful because as this county wrestled with a meals tax and people getting a sense of understanding where it can make a difference, I believe that some of the dialogue and the work that's coming out of SKEPT and getting to understand other jurisdictions around the country that have a dedicated funding stream for children and services is a great model for us to be a better understand as a county. And, you know, we have a soil and water tax in this county already, that, you know, dedicated funding to soil and water because we know that's a commitment in this county for our environment. And so I think that it will be a helpful future conversation for both boards and the public to engage in. More to come in the future.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Now we're at board matters, and I call on Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to just make a shout-out to Principal Goodlow at Rocky Run Middle School. I was privileged to get a tour of the ongoing renovation project out there, and her energetic, positive attitude in the middle of a very extensive project is just obviously reaping huge benefits. So a shout-out to her and a thanks to her for allowing me and giving me that inside look at what's happening there. I hope that we can somehow showcase what's happening there for the county, for the citizens of the county, and also to turn it into an opportunity for learning for the students because I think there's lots of students who'd be fascinated, not just the kids participating in the FATE program, which is they're building houses, but lots of kids could benefit by seeing sort of what's happened when you have a renovation progress where people, where the school is occupied and operations are ongoing. And it's a very, very interesting process and project and great staff out there. So also a compliment to Mr. Plattenberg and his, and our rep out there, Danny, who's doing a great job managing it. I also want to, just finally, just, I want to mention, Benny brought up a great point today about how much small acts of kindness can have a very positive impact in ways you may not even know for people. This time of year is often thought of as the holiday season, and there's lots of great music, and we have parties and food, but it's also going to be a very stressful time for a lot of people. And so, you know, my youngest daughter was, is going to be getting her PSAT scores, and you can see the anxiety that kids feel. And so I really think that's a really wonderful remark you gave, and I encourage everybody to allow this season, that's a very hopeful season, to bring that joy and that all the staff can also relax and enjoy it and relieve some of the pressure that we all feel.
Ms. Palczek.
Yes, thank you. And like you, Mr. Wilson, our student Ben brought, reminded me of my favorite phrase in Swahili, pole pole, slowly, slowly. Always a good reminder, always trying to rush, pole pole, you will get there. So thank you for reminding us that in our very busy times, especially in this area here. I also wanted to give a little shout-out to our video speaker, Rajna, talking about adaptive classes. I had the opportunity to visit one adaptive class right here in Luther Jackson this week, where a wonderful special ed teacher, Mrs. Mayer, and the art teacher decided to create a class on their own and have Gen Ed students work with her special ed class. And they have a weekly class, excellent to see, and a really nice example of inclusion. I also got a chance to show my restaurant etiquette skills to the class, and we all had a wonderful time. And also had discussions about universal design. So I really hope that, I know we've been hearing and talking and having long-term conversation about inclusion in our school system. So I do hope, Dr. Brabran, I know Dr. Johnson had to leave, that we can continue that conversation and how we implement. I know we have the pockets of excellence, and it really is structurally, what can we do? And I know there are different thoughts across the board of how to do it and what parents and the community would like to see. And then also, I had the opportunity, I did not get to vote, but I was. And then also I had the opportunity, I did not get to vote, but I was a Girls on the Run coach this year, my very first time. We started a new team with 19 girls from Graham Road Elementary School this year. It was fabulous. I got off a plane at 10:00 p.m. and was up at 5:00 a.m. to go run with them in Dulles. Luckily, someone needed my spot, so I was happy to hand it over and be the photographer. But it really is an excellent curriculum. I think, we think of it as running and it's so much more than that. It really is leadership, friendship skills, community, projects. I've been so impressed with the curriculum and just happy to hear that they are the foundation's partner of the year. And they do have a middle school program now as well for those who are looking for middle school programs for girls. And then finally, I wanted to thank two great local organizations, the FCC PTA. So many of us were able to join them and our members on the Board of Supervisors, including Anne Delegate Keem, for their advocacy day this year. It was wonderful to hear so many stories from electeds from the community and how many of us came to be in service and involved with PTAs. And then finally, I want to congratulate Bright Paths, another great community partner who had their open house, their brand new offices this year. Their pantry is very large and they provide excellent services to our families in need. So just a nice reminder that it really truly takes a village and I appreciate what we do during the holiday season to ensure all of our families and our kids have food and some of them have gifts in addition as well. So thank you and I wish you all a good evening.
Mr. McAlveen.
Well, hello. So this past week, the board has been very busy on many fronts. First of all, we did have a great presentation to our state and federal legislators last week and I appreciate my colleagues, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders and Megan McLaughlin for filling in while I was in transit. But it did, we're always thrilled to engage with our legislators and hear the work they're going to do on our behalf at the state level. And we have quite a fruitful list of priorities this year, which the board expanded, and so we are eager for results on all of those many issues which you heard us address at our last board meeting. Secondly, this past Tuesday, yes, Tuesday, we hosted our newest cohort of this School Board Student Leadership Development Program, also known as the SBSLDP, and we are thrilled to welcome them as part of this program. You will be seeing their friendly faces at our forums, work sessions, public hearings, and regular business meetings over the coming six months or so. And we look forward to inculcating in them the skills they will need to be successful student advocates. And finally, I look forward to seeing my colleagues as well as our colleagues on the Fairfax City Board at the joint dinner next week. Just for my colleagues on this board, I do want to provide some constructive criticism. I understand that we are hosting this dinner this year and I believe the last time we actually held the dinner in Fairfax County, even when we were hosting, was 2012, I think, when Mr. Moon was chair and so wisely put it at Wule Oak and Tyson's. So I know, I am one board member who's passionate about getting this dinner and retrieving the tax revenue from it in the county as opposed to Fairfax City. I know Fairfax City is far more convenient for the superintendent, but that's not why we put it there. So anyway, yes, I look forward to seeing my colleagues there and I wish everyone a wonderful few weeks in this holiday season.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Thank you. As everyone's saying, it's a very busy time of the year and I've also added some school visits to my agenda. So this last week, I visited Thomas Jefferson High School and was able to hear all about the wonderful things that are happening there. I was also at Lynbrook Elementary School when State Senator Dick Sasslaw visited during the time where the Capital Area Food Bank made their monthly visit. It's a wonderful program for families and we are thankful for the food bank's participation. I was also thrilled to see the talented students at Edison High School's production of Mama Mia last weekend. I think they have another group of performances this weekend, so I encourage you all to go out and see that. I've also visited the new principals at Franconia Elementary and Rose Hill Elementary. As Mr. McAlveen said, we were all happy to welcome our new student leadership cohort. They're always excited for this opportunity and it's wonderful to see such enthusiasm for potential new leaders and legislators. I also attended the A-PAC Committee Meeting and I am thankful for the committee for their hard work to date on their current agenda items. Yesterday with Ms. McLaughlin, thank you for that update, that thorough update from SKIPPED, it was quite a robust conversation and I too was thankful for the opportunity to be there. Thank you to Fairfax County Council of PTAs for your community forum. That was great and I appreciated the breakout sessions. And as I said at the meeting, I am hopeful we can do that more often, particularly the breakout sessions, if that can be arranged for us regionally, that would be great. I invite all Lee District residents to come to my Kofax Coffee. That will be held next Wednesday, December 12th, from 9:30 to 11:00 at Grounded Coffee Shop and that's on Telegraph Road. I supply the pastries and I am happy to have you come, grab a cup of coffee there and just talk to me about what's going on in Lee District or what you might have in your mind. And it's the holiday season, so to all those who celebrate, Happy Hanukkah.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members tend to do a lot of similar things together, so I'm not going to talk about things that I did with Ms. Darrenak Kofax, but I want to send out my congratulations and gratitude to my colleague Ryan McAlveen, even though he was in transit, you were able to send in your video presentation, the legislative briefing. That was very well done, that was very well taken, and I appreciate that you're making that effort. And last Saturday, I saw superintendent at a football game at the Westfield playing against the Freedom of Prince William County doing a coin toss. I was really rooting for a Fairfax County team. Westfield was going for fourth straight state finals to win fourth straight state championships. Unfortunately, in the second quarter, we lost our quarterback and at one point, we were down by three touchdowns with just a few minutes left, made a valiant effort to come very close, but when a fourth time play stopped on the six yard line, Westfield lost by a touchdown. But still a great season. I want to congratulate all the players and coaching staff and students and parents for the program. Quarterback has, is in recovery. My thoughts and prayers are with the quarterback and his family and all those students who are supporting him.
Ms. McAlveen, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Very quickly, I just wanted to spotlight a few things from the foundation luncheon. I was seated at the table with Grand Involved. And for those of you who are not familiar with Grand Involved, it began in 2014. It was community volunteers who are semi-retired or retired predominantly, who would like to help in our Title I schools. And so in 2014, it first began in Crestwood Elementary and in just a few short four years, it's grown to 100 volunteers, 15 teams going into six of our schools. And they continue to grow in size and desire to help make a difference in our public schools. And as we so often talk about the wealth and talent of our citizenry, it's remarkable that these volunteers now want to come and help create more enriched learning for our students. So I wanted to give that shout out to that organization. And I also had the opportunity to meet several individuals from Deloitte Consulting, who also are one of our sponsors and supporters with their mentorship program, and so many other organizations that were there at the foundation luncheon. So kudos to Elizabeth Murphy, the foundation board, and all the people involved. It was really an inspiring event and in particular, the CEO of Inova Hospitals was just an amazing speaker and all three of my children were born at that hospital. So it's great to see such a dynamic leader has come to that position. I also want to make people aware, especially if you live near or in Braddock District, the annual Taste of Braddock Holiday Event will be going on next Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in Supervisor Cook's office area. It showcases almost 30 restaurants in the area, so it's free to all residents, but it's a great way to come mingle with local and state elected officials, residents, and everyone who enjoys being part of our very dynamic Braddock District. Isn't that right, Mr. Moon?
Absolutely.
Fellow Braddock resident. I also had the pleasure of visiting schools with Dr. Braybrand last Friday and boy, did we have fun. First, we were at Eagle View Elementary where I got to see a CLT, known as a collaborative learning team, in action with second grade teachers and that was amazing to watch and observe. And then we went over to Wakefield Forest Elementary, also in the Braddock District, where Dr. Braybrand and I got to participate in, along with Region Five Superintendent Becky Baneck, line dancing to Michael Jackson and other really fun 80's thriller-type music. But it's meant for students to not only discover the joy of dancing, but more importantly, a very mindfulness activity. And so was so impressed with the principal Sharon Prindle over there and everything she's doing at just such a dynamic school that we have in our system. And we also then, Ms. Baneck and I went over to Old Creek Elementary where Apple Federal Credit Union bestowed a $4,000 grant to our teachers, three young, dynamic, fourth grade teachers who wrote a grant and brought funding for Technology and Innovation Lab at Old Creek. So that was also just a wonderful example of our teachers really looking at ways to enhance learning in our schools. And finally, I just want to share with you all that I was participating today at Frost Middle Schools Biannual Student Services Advisory Council, where we learn about the counseling services in our public schools. And I go to many within the Braddock District. But one of the things that we've been talking about is student stress and teacher stress. And so to our wonderful student representative on the school board, Benny, I would like for you to think about this and discuss it at perhaps a future SAC meeting with the county student leaders. And the concept has to do with year-long grade books. We hear too often that by doing the quarter grades, there's this stress on students and teachers to get enough grades in the grade book every quarter. They're worried about being able to make sure that there's enough grades to discount a potentially bad grade in there. And it's just, it creates volume of assessments that create workload for teachers and volume of testing on our students. And yet Fairfax County's transcript, especially at the high school, middle school level, it's a year-end grade. So if we really want to look at reducing stress, reducing workload, and bringing the joy back to learning, I would love to see us try and pilot this. And it would be very easy to do and I'd like to even talk to Mary Beth Love Glass about, well, you might be doing it in some schools, but you're not doing it system-wide because the kids are still getting, they're still getting quarter grades and they're still stressing out about this quarter grade averaged in with the next quarter grade. And so if Ms. Corbett Sanders is whispering to me that we're doing it in some schools, if we are, then Dr. Braybrand, as I know this is Board Matters where it's supposed to be light and cheerful and I'm hoping this is inspiring conversation, but I do want to put my little marker on the table that I would like for the board then in a Braybrand briefing to learn about where this is being piloted and, because I just think this is very important and when I talk to the students, they say that would take a lot of the stress off of them. And I will say this last thing, Dr. Braybrand, ParentView is a great thing for allowing parents to monitor how their kids are doing, but the problem is ParentView means stress again on our teachers of, parents are looking almost daily sometimes at the ParentView grade book. They're asking parents where those graded assignments are. And so I think if we went to the year-long grade book, people wouldn't have this artificial every nine weeks, oh my goodness, what's in the grade book? What does it say? What's my child's grade? And yes, to anyone who's watching, I do understand that we as parents play a very important role of also trying to take deep breaths, remember that this is about students learning and growing and mastering material. And I will also confess right here on air, I don't have a ParentView account, I never had a ParentView account, I never had a CIST account, I don't even know how to log into it. You know, I was just one of those parents that I was relying on my boys to keep it together and luckily they did.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Well, a number of things, as Mr. Moon said, our joint, we do together. So I'll just mention a few things, well, one we did together, but I would like to say I really enjoyed meeting our student leaders this week and just a wonderful program and look forward to more students applying to that program because I think it's a great opportunity. The other thing I was able to go to, which I was really excited to find out, about the Urban Alliance, which is an organization that works specifically on workforce development. And I was there when AT&amp;T delivered a $1 million check to that organization and we do have FCPS schools that participate. But I love the phrase that they said they were working on the school-to-workforce pipeline. And I was inspired by that. So I will keep it brief, I know that we've had some extensive comments today. So I will be visiting, I've already visited TJ, enjoyed that very much, and I will be at Braddock Elementary tomorrow and look forward to the performance of Mama Mia. I believe it's at Thomas Edison. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Well, I also want to congratulate the foundation on an excellent luncheon. I think everyone enjoyed it and it was a tremendous success. I also want to thank all of our state legislators for joining us for our conversation the other night. I believe most of them were there and we did have a good conversation in anticipation of the legislative session. It was great to see our new student leader cohort and I had an opportunity to talk at length with my student leader who is from Annandale High School, a wonderful young woman, and I look forward to working with her for the rest of the year. I also look forward to meeting with a group of student leaders from several of my high schools next week. That should be an interesting conversation too. Congratulations to Belvedere Elementary School. They received an Apple Federal Credit Union grant from Apple Federal Credit Union and their foundation for, to support environmental learning and that's a wonderful addition to that great school. And lastly, I just wanted to let people know about the Justice High School Winter Fest, which is coming up this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon. It's in the auxiliary gym and there's going to be food and crafts and games and a movie and it's $5 per family, but if you bring a toy donation for Toys to Tots, then you can come in for free. So I hope to see people there. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. So as a member this year of the FCPS Foundation Board, you know, I'm not thanking me, but I am acknowledging the work of Kevin Reynolds as this year's chairman and Elizabeth Murphy to pull together an amazing lunch and highlight- to pull together an amazing lunch and highlight the work that we can do as a foundation for the teachers and what those teacher grants can mean. Directed resources is sort of a passion of mine, instead of necessarily, you know, spreading out and giving everybody the same, you know, talking to teachers and having it be from the bottom up of what they need specifically for their classrooms in order to promote student achievement. And a sincere thanks to Dr. Jones as the CEO of Inova Health Systems for his inspiring conversation with us from the podium about the need to have a premier workforce. And we're a part of graduating students into a premier workforce and workforce readiness. Thank you to the County Council PTAs for putting on their event, and all of the people. I was shocked at the number that came for the Springfield District. Just so you know, Dr. Braybrand, the two top issues as a part of the feedback were a less than stellar view of FCPS on, although there was one gentleman that was very, very supportive. And it's always fascinating to go to events like this. And I was thankful to Benny for his comments earlier this evening because I had never heard before, and this is something that is juxtaposed, that on the one hand, we have later start times and we're promoting digital citizenship, and on the other time, teachers are setting homework turn-in deadlines at 11:59 PM. Those two are really, you know, diametrically opposed, and so we should be looking at that and an opportunity that, you know, happens where you don't imagine to maybe improve some of our practices. Westfields, I'm sorry I couldn't be there. This is the tug of being a school board member and a parent, but a lot of those players were cohorts of my son in the SYA program. So to all you SYA coaches out there, we may not have had another feather in our cap with the Westfields win, but you certainly taught those players to play with dignity, and they're still showing it at this age. I will be visiting Sangster next Wednesday morning. I'll be looking forward to that. I am thankful to Amonticello, sorry, Amonticello and Mount Vernon Group of Women, who invited me as a guest speaker for holiday luncheon. And I acknowledge a grand dom of Virginia, a former delegate, Ms. Gwen Cody, who was lovely to visit with. And most significantly, to my Lake Braddock community. I jokingly said to Dr. Braybrand at the beginning of a meeting yesterday that I was returning from my 30-hour-a-week part-time job. And he said, oh, I didn't know you had a part-time job. I said, I do. It's Lake Braddock. And to all of the staff in that building, whether you are educator or administrator or otherwise, coach, support staff, probably in the last week, I've spoken with close to 100 of you. And I hear you. And I've never probably been a more relentless advocate to get that building what it deserves. And even more so because so many people were trusted to come and speak in the Part of the Process. There is one more Community Learning, Community Listening Authentic Session this coming Monday. We are extending the hours from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We do have an all-day work session. I believe that Ms. McLaughlin and I intend to leave the work session the second that it's over, or the second that we can, to be there until 8:00 PM or until people stop, until people stop coming. The principal panel process will, I think, be closely monitored as we undertake the search and finally deliver the leader that the Lake Braddock community deserves. And I thank Ms. Penny Gross for standing in in the meantime.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I want to thank the County Council PTAs for their advocacy day, and the many people, parents from the Drainsville District came out to speak. And I also like my colleagues. Congratulate the foundation for the excellent luncheon. Kudos to Elizabeth Murphy and Kevin Reynolds. It was excellent. And I enjoyed the Winter Fest McLean Parade, and the McLean Marching Band did a great job. And congratulations to Lincoln High School and Biloxi Blues. So we actually had seven Cappy shows last weekend. We've done 18. We have 42 to go. So thank you all very much. Thank you for those who went to Edison Play and Mama Mia. So appreciate that very much. So I believe we have more work to do tonight, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Dr. Braybrand. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, we've already taken care of you. So now I'm going to spend a couple of moments. Very few people realize that since 2014, 42%, there's been a 42% increase in jobs in the DC metro area that require less than a four-year degree but are technology-oriented. And this steep gap continues to grow. So tonight, I am thanking JP Morgan Chase for its very generous support of our schools. Today, actually, yesterday, they announced that five local school districts will benefit from a $6 million grant. That's a little bit over a million dollars per school district to strengthen the regional workforce pipeline. Northern Virginia Community College, in partnership with Fairfax County Public Schools, was invited to apply for the grant that would help more high school students enter and complete demand-driven pathways in IT and cybersecurity, while earning industry-recognized credentials and significant post-secondary credit toward a related degree program. And they won the grant. So the long-term goal is to increase technology classes and dual enrollment programs for all of our students. Northern Virginia will lead, will be the lead organization in the grant, and Fairfax County will lead the efforts for high school course selection and student enrollment. In addition to that, there will be a number of employers who have already committed to 2,200 internships for students successfully completing these programs. This is a big deal, folks, and this is how we ensure that our children throughout the county are able to take advantage of the economic development associated with some of these big technology companies coming to the area. And so I just want to once again thank JP Morgan for its very generous support of students across the DC metro area, and Fairfax County in particular. And we look forward to partnering with Northern Virginia Community College in this very important And then as far as things that I've been involved in, yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Ventures and Community Meeting. This is a group of not-for-profits in the Mount Vernon area that support our, neediest in our community, and they also are very active in creating a greater awareness of issues that impact not only our students, but their families and the quality of life in the region. So yesterday's discussion was focused on human trafficking and the importance of raising greater awareness of the risk of human trafficking to our students, and the need for us to act collaboratively in educating students, parents, and community members about this high-risk issue. And so I look forward to working more closely with Ventures and Community on that going forward. And I also want to just raise an issue. We've got a special election coming up, and I'm urging all students that will turn 18 by the November general election to go out and register to vote if you want to be able to vote in the special election coming up. And the League of Women Voters, pardon me? Oh, it's for, it's a special election for the State Senate. And so I would, and, okay, I will, in '33. But I just urge people to make sure that they register to vote, and if your students are going to be 18, please go ahead and register to vote, have them register to vote. And those students that are away at school that would normally vote in those precincts to go ahead and get their absentee ballot and vote. And Happy Hanukkah, everybody. We are going back into closed session, and so I'm, I will read the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider, no, it's not, okay, personnel matters, specifically the performance of specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and discuss and consider disciplinary matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.23711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Strauss. All those in favor? And that motion is unanimous. We will now go into closed session.